I'd like to call the June 18, 2019 meeting of the Buncombe County Commission to Order. Thank you all for being with us this evening. Let's begin our meeting with a pledge of allegiance. Please rise and join us in the pledge. As we hold our commission meeting this week, schools are holding graduations ceremonies across Buncombe County. So before we start our meeting, let's take a moment to acknowledge the great work and dedication of all the people who work for our schools in Buncombe County, the teachers, administrators, custodians, cafeteria workers, coaches, school resource officers, and nurses. The people who work for our schools do a great job, and it's one of the most important jobs in our community. So to all of our educators and school employees, we say thank you. Let's take a moment, before we begin our meeting, for silence to reflect on the teachers who have made a difference in each of our lives, or to offer a silent prayer for the safety of all the kids in our community as they enjoy their summer break. Please join us in a moment of silence. And thank you all again for being with us at our commission meeting this evening. Got just a couple of announcements. First, there is parking validation and bus passes available for any members of the public who are in the meeting this evening. If you've parked in the county parking deck next door, you can get your parking pass facilitated by one of the officers who was with us this evening on your way out. That is valid for today only. Let me read the ethics reminder to the board. "In accordance with the Code of Ethics adopted by the Board, all county commissioners have a duty to obey all applicable laws regarding official actions, to uphold the integrity and independence of the office, to avoid impropriety in the exercise of official duties, to faithfully perform the duties of the office, and to conduct the affairs of the governing Board in an open and public manner. Is there any item on the agenda the outcome of which will have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact for any Board member? Does any Board member have a financial interest in any public contract coming before the Board today? There being none, all Board members have a duty and obligation to vote on any matters voted on by the Board at this meeting." And also, before we begin, please put your cellphones on silence, or turn them off, please. All right, we now come to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda and to follow the remainder of the agenda in the order published?
(inaudible)
Oh yeah, I'm sorry. Thank you so much. What's the...
We wanted to ask the Board to add one item under Old Business for the Ferry Road contract and to authorize execution or consideration of an extension of the current contract.
Okay, by consensus, that will be added. All right, thank you. Thanks for the reminder. All right, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda and follow the agenda as published with the addition of the item just mentioned by Mr. Frue?
So moved.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. All right, we have three public hearings this evening, and Josh Freeman will be presenting the first one. Actually, he'll be presenting all three. So I think we're ready to take on the first one.
Josh is going to present two rezoning items. We did just have a conversation with the applicant for the Uherka rezoning, and they actually would like to consider a smaller area for rezoning. We think this needs to go back to the planning board, so we would look to Ms. Hockaday and Mr. Frue. We think that you have the ability to just remand that back to the planning board for them to hold their hearing. The applicant is here and will concur with this, but we wanted to go ahead and mention that as part of that rezoning application.
Would that be a withdrawal and a new application?
That's where we would need your advice, and we would...
I think that would be the appropriate method.
In looking at the planning board ordinance, I don't see any provision that would allow this commission to remand something. I think they could withdraw and reapply for a different area.
Okay.
Okay, so if they withdraw, if they withdraw it, don't we have to change the agenda to reflect that that has been withdrawn? And then they can reapply? Because if...
They can reapply, since it would be an application for a different area, so it wouldn't be the same application which would be barred for one year if the Board were to consider it. But I believe that they can withdraw their application any time before consideration.
So how do we acknowledge that?
Can we just have a motion to take this item off of the agenda for this meeting?
Yes.
So we're just taking no action on it? All right, is there a motion to remove the Uherka rezoning request from the agenda?
No offense to Nathan, but are they here? Can we get a confirmation on that?
Come on up to the microphone, please.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, so we're just going to take this off the agenda tonight, and that gives you guys some options. If you want to start over, or modify it, or bring it back, I think you've got a number of different ways you could handle it. Is there a motion to withdraw this item from the agenda for discussion tonight?
I move that we withdraw.
Second.
Okay. Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Great.
All right. Okay. Let me get my items in order here just briefly. Okay. So if we could pull up the Henning presentation? Thank you. So the item before you, under public hearing, is the Henning zoning map amendment. The case number is ZPH 2019-24. This item was legally advertised in accordance with state law and general statutes and county code. There's information here as to when the items were posted and mailed, if you're interested. The applicant is Brenda Henning of Henning Rental Properties of Buncombe County LLC. The address of the property is 2121 US Highway 70. For geographic reference, it's almost directly across the street from the Deener headquarters or DEQ headquarters out on 70. The property is 0.52 acres in size. It's currently commercially developed and has been for some time, predating Buncombe County's adoption of zoning. It's a fairly gentle topography. It's serviced by water and sewer, and it's along a major four-lane highway. The proposal is to rezon the property from R3 residential to neighborhood service. For the public's benefit, R3 residential is our highest density, most intensive residential district that allows primarily residential uses that includes everything from single-family residential through multifamily apartment structures. Neighborhood service, on the other hand, is our lowest intensity commercial zoning district, so it allows a broad range of light commercial uses, doctor's offices, things like that, real estate offices, law offices, some light retail. It also allows a pretty broad range of residential uses. So the main change here would be to allow commercial uses without any significant change to the range of allowable residential uses. These are the purpose statements of the two districts compared side by side. I'm not going to read all this to you, but I will just hit the high points. The R3 is intended for a variety of residential development, depending on the availability of water and sewer, as well as recreational and community service and educational type uses. Neighborhood service is intended to provide suitable locations for limited, neighborhood-oriented commercial businesses and service activities in close proximity to residences. A mix of commercial business and service uses, generally intended to be compatible with any surrounding residential development, should have water and sewer. In terms of the comprehensive plan, or the land use plan, this is our kind of starting point for analyzing rezoning applications. And staff's position is that, and the planning board, their position as well, that this application is consistent with your adopted land use plan. It is gentle ground. It's not steep. It's not in the floodplain. It's not near low-density residential development. It's near a major transportation corridor, served by water and sewer. So both staff and the planning board recommend approval on the basis that it would be consistent with your adopted land use plan. These photographs, and I hope they do some justice to the community, shows you existing development patterns along US Highway 70. And as you can see, there is existing commercial development in proximity to the subject property. Again, staff's recommendation is approval. Planning board's recommendation is approval by unanimous vote on May 20. Happy to take any questions.
Is there a motion? Or questions? We will... Oh, we need to... Yeah, we actually do the public hearing before we make the motion. All right. Very good. We will open the public hearing on this rezoning at 5:14. Are there any members of the public who wish to comment on the issue? All right, we'll close the public hearing at 5:15. Is there a motion?
Move approval?
Wait.
Sorry.
Wait, there's more.
Yes. All right, hang on. Okay, so I'm going to make a motion that is consistent with the county comprehensive land use plan reasonable and in the public interest. That's the first one you want?
That you adopt the consistency statement that states that...
So I'm going to have to add to my notes up here, aren't I? Okay. That we add to the consist... Okay. Yeah, I'm going to have to put all this right here. Okay, that the motion to adopt the plan consistency statement. The proposed map amendment would not be detrimental to owners, adjacent neighbors, and surrounding communities as it does... Do I have to read all that? Okay, I will. Okay. As it does meet the number of goals as identified in the Buncombe County Comprehensive Land Use Plan update, therefore the requested zoning would be reasonable and in public interest. That's the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Now, is there a motion to approve the commercial service zoning? Neighborhood...
Neighborhoods.
One part of our packet says... Okay, neighborhood service.
So moved.
Sorry about that. Thank you.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you, Josh. One more.
Okay. So now for the Johansson public hearing. If you could pull that presentation up. Okay, thank you. So the second application on your agenda tonight is the Johansson zoning map amendment. The case number is ZPH 2019-23. This public hearing was advertised in accordance with the general statutes and county code. The applicant is Carolyn Johansson of Advanced Properties of North Carolina LLC. The address of the property is 67 Rutherford Road. Property is 1.53 acres in size, currently vacant, fairly gentle topography, served by public water and sewer, and it's located off Rutherford Road, which is NCDOT street. It's within .24 miles of US Highway 70. Thank you. Oh, sorry. Eyes are watering here. The subject property is currently zoned R3. The proposed rezoning would take that property to commercial services. R3, I'm not going to repeat what I said in the previous hearing about the R3 district. It is our highest intensity residential zoning district. The commercial services district is our... It's a relatively intense commercial zoning district. It's suitable for locations of clustered commercial development to encourage commercial activity. Locations should have access to water and sewer, and these are typically found along major commercial highways, although you do have areas like this that are set back off of commercial highway, or major highways. I will point out that, back to the previous slide, Rutherford Road is a fairly narrow NCDOT street. It is, however, currently serving a lot of existing commercial and industrial development, mostly located to the south of Rutherford Road, but there are some uses to the north as well. Staff and the planning board, both in terms of analyzing the proposal in the context of your land use plan, find that it is consistent. Again, gentle slopes, not in the floodplain, proximate to major transportation corridors, served by water and sewer, and not adjacent to low-density residential development. In terms of staff's recommendations, we do recommend approval is submitted. Likewise, the planning board, by unanimous vote on May 20, recommended the same. I'd be happy to take any questions.
All right, thanks, Josh.
Yes.
I don't think so many questions at the moment. We'll open the public hearing at 5:18. Are there any members of the public who wish to comment on this issue? All right, we'll close the public hearing at 5:19. Is there a motion?
So I move approval, a motion to adopt the plan consistency statement. Proposed map amendment would not be detrimental to the owners, adjacent neighbors, and surrounding communities, as it does meet a number of goals as identified in the Buncombe County Comprehensive Land Use Plan update. Therefore, the requested zoning would be reasonable and in the public interest. That's a motion.
Is there a second? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
And I'll move the change to commercial.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, the motion is to rezone to commercial service. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right. Very good. Ms. Pender, is there any announcements under the manager's report?
Yes, sir.
Great. All right, we come to Old Business. And first, let's go ahead and take care of the Ferry Road item.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, as we discussed about two weeks ago, we've had this property at Ferry Road, 130-some acres, under contract with Carnegie Holdings LLC, which is a California-based entity, and they have been working through their due diligence and getting the approvals they need. Their current inspection period expires on Saturday, that's June 22. A few weeks ago, they did request a 120-day extension. By way of background or follow-up to that, their lawyer's been on vacation. He's back in town, and we've been discussing the terms and conditions, and we're considering a six-month extension. Last Thursday, with the planning director, Chairman Newman, and Commissioner Presley, and myself, big contention of DOT officials, as well as representatives of the proposed buyer and their traffic engineer, we met on site and talked about all the issues involved with getting improvements into that road. I've done some title work preliminarily. Dry Ferry Road is a big issue because it's old Brevard Road, and as far as I can tell, as far back as horse and buggy days, very small, very narrow, needs a lot of work and improvements. Whether this buyer ends up pulling the trigger and buying this property is to the county's best interest to make sure that we get the DOT approvals we need in place, such that any other development can come in there. So at this time, with this resolution, we are simply asking the Board to formally approve the offer of Carnegie Holdings for the $5,250,000. And that's a formality. We've run the upset bid. We had an original bid of $5 million. This was an upset bid. We ran an ad. No further upset bids were received, so we're with this bidder until we can close or not close, and that's what we're talking about now. We can't tender a deed in any event until this Board formally approves that offer, and that's what we're asking the Board to do by this resolution.
All right. And if we approve this resolution, it doesn't lock us into any... There's still discussions about how long the extensions would be and things like that, so it doesn't lock us into any particular position on those details?
Not at all. Not at all, no surprise.
All right. Thank you. All right, any questions? Or is there a motion?
(inaudible)
All right, there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Any members of the public wish to comment on the motion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you, Mr. Frue.
Sir.
All right. We now come to the FY 2020 budget adoption, and I will ask Mr. Pender to tee us off on this item.
Thank you, Commissioners. I want to thank the Board for your work and direction that you gave to staff over the past several meetings to put us in a place where we can bring to you the fiscal year 2020 budget. This evening, I will cover the changes for the general fund recommended amounts, as well as provide you with an explanation of changes to four other annual funds since presented a recommended budget. I am proposing a net increase of $63,030 to the general fund. As you are aware, the Board requested an increase of 4.24% to the available amount for strategic partnerships. This equates to $25,125 in additional funding. The total allocation for strategic partnerships is $630,805. After completing its work, the Affordable Housing Committee had $88,155 of unallocated funds that they returned to the general fund. These two actions result in a net decrease of $63,030 in expenses and a corresponding reduction of appropriate fund balance in the general fund. The new adjusted total for the general fund is $334,454,722. Beyond the general fund, our budget comprises of several other annually budgeted funds. I'm recommending change to four such funds. The first is occupancy tax fund. Budget staff has continued to review and refine our projections. In reevaluating the revenue collection trends, I am recommending reducing the estimated occupancy tax revenue from $28.2 million to $27 million, a reduction of $1.2 million. The second annually budgeted fund is a transportation or mountain mobility fund. I'm recommending an increase of $796,433,000 due to unspent grant funds that were obligated to purchase a vehicle at June 30. This action will bring forward the budget from 2019 to 2020, the year the funds will be needed to pay for that purchase. Similar to the transportation fund, I'm recommending an increase of $189,000 in the inmate commissary fund due to unexpended funds that were budgeted or obligated at June 30. This is to purchase a body scanner for the detention center. This action will bring forward a budget from fiscal 2019 to fiscal 2020, the year the funds will be expended. The last annually budgeted fund that I'm recommending an adjustment to is the fire district fund. When I presented a recommended budget, we had not completed our review of the fire district's request. The change of $1,323,000 that you see before you tonight represents the revenue for the five fire districts that have a tax increase that I recommended at the last meeting. This chart reflects the recommended tax rates for all jurisdictions that you levy a tax rate for. As a recap, I am recommending a tax increase for five fire districts. Anka, 1.5 cents for a tax rate of 10.50. Fairview, 3-cent tax increase for a tax rate of 14.5. French Broad, 2-cent increase for a tax rate of 17 cents. Riceville, 2.5 cents for a tax rate of 14.5. And West Buncombe, 1 cent for a tax rate of 14 cents. In addition to those five, I'm recommending the other 15 tax districts maintain their current tax rate. That is Asheville Special at 8.6. Asheville Suburban, 8.5. Barnersville, 20 cents. Broad River, 16 cents. East Buncombe, 12 cents. Garren Peak, 15 cents. Jupiter, 12 cents. Lester, 14 cents. North Buncombe, 12. Reddens Creek and Beaver Dam, 15 cents. Reynolds, 12.3 cents. Skylan, 10.10. Swanonoa, 14. Abrahamani, 14.5. And Woodfin, 10 cents. In addition, I'm recommending maintaining a tax rate for the general fund of 52.9 cents and 12 cents tax rate for Asheville City Schools. I'll now ask Jennifer Burnett, our budget officer, to go through in sections the budget ordinance that is before you right now.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. Provided to you, hopefully in your packet, you will see two documents. One is the titled Buncombe County Budget Ordinance, fiscal year 2019-2020, and then the other will be referencing the Capital Projects ordinances for beginning effective July 1, 2019. Want to review these documents for you so that you are familiar with the sections that are outlined in the document. So the first one is the county budget ordinance, which comprises the general fund and all other annual funds for appropriation. The general fund is presented in Section 1 as a balanced budget in the amount of $334,454,723. The appropriation section notes the expenses by function, and revenues are outlined by type. I will note that this Board adopts the general fund budget by function, and so that's why the expenditure dollars are outlined as such. Section 2 notes all other annual funds. Each fund is, again, balanced for expenses and revenues. I'm going to list the funds and the total budget amounts for each, beginning with the occupancy tax special revenue fund, $27 million. 911 special revenue fund, $857,000. Tax reappraisal fund, $890,000. Fire and service district special revenue fund, $35 million and $15,457. Mountain mobility special revenue fund, $4,838,366. PDF Woodfin special revenue fund, $640,950. The Sheriff's forfeitures fund, $339,111. Next is the solid waste enterprise fund, $9,470,174. Inmate commissary and welfare fund, $801,909. Health employment, property and casualty insurance internal service fund, $39,906,289. Section 3 identifies the tax levies for which you approve. You heard from the county manager. I will reiterate, the property tax rate is flat to fiscal year 2019 at 52.9 cents per $100 of assessed value. The collection rate is estimated to be 99.75%, and the approximate tax rate... And the approximate taxable property value is $38.98 billion. Asheville City Schools requested to remain flat at 12 cents per $100 of assessed value. And the table reviewed earlier by the county manager is what is reflected for each fire district's tax rate outlined in the ordinance. Section four outlines salary amounts for the chairman, vice chairman, and commissioners, and notes that travel for you will be reimbursed consistent with the same plan as employees. Section five provides authorization for the county manager to approve transfers across functions within a fund up to an amount of $75,000. Section six and seven explains the changes from the recommended amounts to the proposed adoption amounts for the Mountain Mobility Special Revenue Fund and the Inmate, Commissary, and Welfare Fund. And the reasons are noted and were just explained by the county manager. Section eight outlines that for any expenditures incurred during the process of obtaining debt, the county can reimburse itself from debt proceeds and that this is the... this county's intent for any future debt issuances. Section nine references the classification and pay plan outlined in Exhibit A that's presented for your approval, as well as identifies the recommended 21 new positions requested for approval. Section 10 identifies the parties to which have a responsibility in adhering to and implementing the budget ordinance, and notes that copies will be provided to those specific individuals. Section 11 affirms that any prior ordinances, resolutions, or directives that are in conflict with this ordinance are replaced by this ordinance. Any questions in reference to the budget ordinance related to our annual funds? So, the next portion of the document is a quick review of the capital funds project ordinances, again, effective July 1st of 2019. So, continuing with this document, section one requests an amendment to the Article 46 Sales Tax Fund to appropriate expenses for debt service, interfund transfer, and capital plan maintenance for AB Tech, and the revenues are noted by category. Section two requests an amendment to the Public School ADM, so Average Daily Membership Sales Tax and Lottery Fund. This amendment establishes the estimated budget to enable payment to each Asheville City Schools and Buncombe County Schools for their relative share of the Article 40 and 42 sales tax per state requirements, as well as enable them to be reimbursed for approved lottery tax projects. Section three is an amendment to the Public School Capital Needs Fund to establish the estimated debt service expense payments with the offsetting revenues by category, which is primarily the share of Article 39 since sales tax dedicated to school capital. Section four is an amendment to the Capital Projects Fund. The appropriations are noted for the expense budget for each project, and the revenues are a combination of future bond proceeds, capital savings that resulted from the sale of property in fiscal year 2018, known as Lexington condo, and $50,000 as a transfer from the general fund committed for sidewalks. Section five is an amendment to the Special Projects Fund for the expenses outlined for each project in the section, and the revenues are transfers established from the general fund. And section six identifies the parties to which have a responsibility in adhering to and implementing the budget ordinance, and notes copies will be provided to them. Any specific questions on either of the documents related to the ordinances?
Yeah, one question. Can you... On section four, can you tell me the... Just a brief explanation on the BOC contingency, what that is since it's...
Sure. So, previously, in our discussions around our... For capital planning and in our budget meetings when we've discussed, how are we going to fund those pay-as-you-go need capitals? So, BOC contingency is a... Was a line that's in the Capital Projects Fund. That's savings. So, it's essentially savings from prior... From other projects. Most of those actually were still dollars that were available at the end of fiscal year 2018. So, it's the same dollars we've referenced as capital savings that will be used and redistributed back to the projects in that list.
So, any of those credits are savings just for the...
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
So, then commissioners, the ask tonight was that you would consider approving the recommended annual fund budget and the capital project fund budget, which includes the tax rates as outlined for the general fund, Asheville City Schools, and the fire districts.
All right. Thank you. All right, commissioners, are there any other questions? Or is there a motion?
So, I'll move approval of the Buncombe County Budget Ordinance fiscal year 2019-2020 as read?
Second.
We're doing public comment, too?
We will take public comment.
Okay.
But Commissioner Farr, go ahead. I mean, yeah, Commissioner Farr, go ahead.
Okay.
Matt, would you bring that? Thank you.
I've looked at this budget and everything in it. Everybody's tried to do the best that they could do. And strategic priorities is something we're looking at. That's 14 million, over $14 million. And looking at that, and I'll go to the next slide. We've got the affordable housing. In that, we've got mountain housing opportunities, East Haven Apartments, that were only... We got 2.2 million that we're going to put in it, but we're only putting 900 and some thousand in it at the present time. Then you look at Asheville Homeless Investment Match, $32,000. This is just money that's just keeping, you know... We keep inverting money into one city, not a town or whatever, you know? Loan... The loan is 2.2 million from Buncombe County, scheduled to be diverse at 957,000 based on project milestones. Well, we have to see the milestones because the one that was down here at Glen... The Glen, they didn't do a very good job on, so that's something we've got to really look out for. Clean and renewable energy, we've invested $350,000 into that. And there is multiple-year funds and grants matching investments, $340,000. But the city of Asheville, weatherizing grant matches, we've got so many of those going on to now. It's mountain housing, you've got the city, and you've got city community reficking at $10,000. So, we just keep handing more money into one area, not all of Buncombe County. We've got three districts, and it's all seems to be going into one. This group that's up here, Ms. Avril's worked so hard to try to put this together, and I'm 100% in favor of what she's tried to do. But the fact is, is we're going to diversion the community workforce, work, you know, workforce transportation support, $100,000. You know, goals to strengthen workforce opportunities in the county and pay the minimum wage of $15 an hour and a 1.7 increase in pay. And I want to back up a second on that because I'm going to have to ask the question, did the commissioners, did we get a raise in this process? Because the numbers look like we did. And we've returned the raise down every year so far. So, but early childhood.
Can we answer that question real quick?
There is no raise in the budget for the commissioners. It's the same that you had.
There was?
No, sir. There's no raise.
And that's including for inflation as well, right? It's actually just the same number as last year.
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay. Thanks for clarifying that.
That answers that question.
I'm not sure if it had the 1.7.
I was looking to Matt Evans to verify that.
All right, we'll come back.
I don't believe it had it, but we will look to see if it was applied across the board.
Should be.
Okay. Let's check that out. I think we'll want to verify that.
Childhood education. I can understand where we're trying to go with that. That's $3.6 million. Asheville City Schools, local preschool districts, $851,000. There we go again. And I hadn't figured out, I don't know what this Warren Wilson College P E E C E program is for $200,000. You've got the Y W C A Early Learning Programs, $79,000. Asheville City Christian Avery Learning Center, another $29,000. I want to see things like this work. And I'm just up here doing this by myself, people. It's not anything against anyone else that's up here. This is just basically where I'm at because I've tried to look out for the county tax dollars for the amount of time that I've been able to sit in this chair. But then you... Justice resource. We're helping people, trying to help people, adult diversions from going to jail. But it's costing us a fortune to try to keep them out of jail. You know? If you look at these numbers here, ours is $1,538,000 that we're running through. We're putting them in jail, but we're trying to help them get out to try to do better. But sometimes they seem to be coming back. And recommendation for six patrol officers, committee engagement, four detective officers for intake specialist, you know? We need to be looking at certain things, not all at one time. That's the problem. We're trying to put it all together in a one-time deal, and it's this year. In the process, opioid awareness, 926,000. Now, I got beat up on that pretty good, but, you know, I probably deserve some of it. But Ellen Froster and myself went out and had meetings on the opioid side, tried to do everything that we could do a few years back. Our staff worked fantastically with us on it, but where have we come to? We haven't come to much at all. And, you know, so I want to, you know... Social work, $661,000, you know? You just keep going on. And then capital planning, I-26 infrastructure program, multi-mobility design element, $1 million funding source debt to tie in with the city, and we're still trying to get I-26. That's all we need is I-26. But why are we trying to get into this? We just keep, you know... And that's not... We're giving mountain housing 2.2 million, debt-free for 20 years. But we're going to go into debt to get... To tie in with the city to do a design deal on multimobile. I don't see how we're playing all these games out in this way, and it's on the paperwork. It says debt. It don't say pay-as-you-go. The next chart is what was handed to us for the nonprofits. I kind of marked mine up because I can't never figure out things when you're given 0 to 10 on five different things. The numbers always come up different. So, I like to put a true number down about what we're going to spend in that. The county spends $20,700,096 nonprofits. We, in our side, grants, we're spending $1,400,000. That's of our money in this. So, here we just keep giving and giving and giving. The budget summary is basically, and if I'm off on this, but what I saw on the paperwork was 19 budget was 435 million. The 20 budget's going to be 453 million, 430,000. And that's a $17 million increase versus where we were in the last year's budget, $17,657,000. We have a group in here called Performance Management. They do good work, I'd say. But I don't know how they continue to do what we're trying to do because, you know, you hear from one side, it's one way, and you hear from one side, it's another way. You know, it was brought in under the last administration. You know, it goes back to... If you looked at Ms. Green, I looked at her and I said, "Ms. Green," you know, ended up saying, "Ms. Green had a clique." Well, Mandy, she walked in and she had an army that came in with her, so... But, you know, then we've had George and Avril, and Avril, you're doing a great job up to this point, you know? But everybody keeps watching. And so, we all have to do that, and people watch me. They might want to get rid of me, but that's okay, too. But, you know, the main thing is, how do you watch people's money when you... You know, we're over $17 million more now than we were before in one year's time. So, if we're going to go up 20 million a year, you know, we have spent the fund balance down to basically 900,000 above the 15% that we have. That's pushing, that's taking like taking your savings account and taking all the dollars out of it to a point that you know you have to have in case you have to get through. But if we don't, you know, this is Peter robbing Paul this year. But next year, if... Does Peter have any money from Paul to be able to rob again? So, is it... We're not going up on the property tax this year, but I'm not worried just about this year. I'm worried about the years to come as far as Buncombe County and the poor people in Buncombe County. As the tax collector told me, there's a gentleman sat down at his desk, it's making payments on his property tax. And his words was, "Is the property tax going to go up?" Retired, just got the income he's got coming in hand, you know? He's on fixed income. He said he's eating peanut butter and jelly sandwiches. When is he going to have to get rid of the jelly? And that's what I'm trying to figure out. When are these people going to get rid of the... Have to get rid of the jelly? You know, all the schools want more, the sheriff's departments want more, everybody wants more. We have things that we should be maintaining that I did, the sheriff's department needs to be maintained. I appreciate every one of you. You know, you may think I don't, but I do. But the fact is, is we only have so many dollars that we can take from the people. You know, I think we're looking at probably a tax increase for next year unless the way it works out that we end up with the homes ended up with more money in the homes, and that will bring the tax rate up anyway, so... But that's, you know, that's the... We're having a prayer for that. And the only one thing I can say is, it's basically, we're doing something at 52.9 that should have been lower originally. We got a penny off last year, but that was, you know, by the good graces of the school helping and the whole package. And I voted for that budget, but I honestly can't vote for this budget because I'm afraid where it's going to take us. One year's not, in my eyes, going to make it for us, you know? Because everybody wants what they want. And it's, you know, there's too many decisions being made, you know, over a lot of the people that basically have done the job for years. And I'm watching it, and I don't want any of then, you know, the people up here, sitting up here, to worry about it. I've done this on my own. My name was tied to it, and that's exactly where I'm at. But the one thing I can't do tonight is vote for this budget because I'm afraid of what it's going to do to us further out. You know, is do the fire tax tonight for the fire departments? If we had to do another tax, you know, what can... What can we say to the people? How are you going to say it to the people? I don't know. I'm just here for a certain period of time. I come in here to work for the people, and I'm going to stay here, you know, as long as the people want to have me. But that's, you know, I cannot walk in the door and say, "I wanted something." Well, I didn't want anything. I just want to try to take care of these people, this county, in my prayer, plain and simple. And then hopefully, everything works out, but I will not be voting for this budget. Thank you.
All right. Did we get an answer on the...
Yes. So, we... So, the budget office did build in the 1.77%, and we are... We did not realize if that's something that's like just routinely...
Yeah, that's...
We can back it out.
Sure. It's the, you know, so the employees get, you know, inflation changes to personnel. We are county employees, part-time, I guess. But in recent years, many commissioners have asked to not have that inflation change added to commissioner salaries. So, I would ask, well, why don't we just... Do any commissioners wish to have the index applied to your salary? If not, I'd say we should just have it backed out.
Back it out.
Yeah. So, it would just remain what it was in the previous year's budget ordinance, exact same number.
That's correct.
So, no change.
Right.
All right?
And we will update that and have the ordinance back to you by the end of the meeting.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Sure.
So, could we have the...
Well, I'm going to amend.
Friendly amendment to the emotion.
So, do I...
So do I need to amend my motion? Change my motion?
Just amend it.
Okay. So move approval of the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty budget as ordinance as read, with the exception of the county commissioners, will, there will not be an increase to the county commissioners. All county commissioners pay at the included rate of one seven point seven seven. Is that good enough? Does that cover it?
And who made the second to the motion?
I did.
It was one of, it was me.
Oh, it was Matt.
Okay. Do you?
Second.
All right. Very good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
One, one other item, Commissioner Frye, thank you for your comments. One item I just wanted to note is that the I twenty-six item is not in the F Y nineteen twenty budget. It is for, it is a project that is forecasted in future years, but it's not, no expenses for that are in this year's budget. But none of that would happen this year. So that will be something the commission can talk about in next year's budget, but none of that would be triggered or funded in this year's budget. Let's go ahead and I'm going to ask if there's any members of the public who wish to comment on the motion. Yes, sir. Mr. Yelton.
As an observer from the audience and watching each and every one of you, thank you, Mike, because I saw five faces up there turn red during your comments, five faces turn red. That tells me you hit a core. And a lot of people know, number one, we're spending money, we're voting to spend a million dollars in the budget down the road when we don't have it now. That's stupid, folks. That is just plain stupid. There's nobody in the audience that you're going to go commit a half a million dollars to buy a house a couple of years out, hoping you got the money to cover it. Also, I'm very simplistic. I saw all those things for education in there in the schools. I want to know how much money we give to the schools totally. Add it all up. That's what I want to see. And I think most of the citizens want to see that. They want to see how much you're giving to the sheriff's department, how much you're giving to the education department. And when I look at that budget, I mean, there's so many lines on there. Avril, I don't see how you was able to put your arms around it, let alone be able to manipulate it and play with it to try to get it to where you didn't have to have a tax increase. But what did I ask you all the last time I was up here? Go ahead, do a tax increase this year. Because you've got an election coming up. You might as well do it now. Because you do it next year, how many of you going to get re-elected? Especially if you have to do a five or a ten, because a one and two ain't going to cut it. You can bid on that million-dollar sale out there, and you can bid on the hospital. You can bid on the come. That's called gambling. And by the way, I was looking at the budget, and the landfill dollar amount was lowered, but on their schedule, they're going to go to two dollars a bag for their garbage. So what percentage increase is that for that enterprise budget? Lots of questions, folks, lots of questions. I just want to see it simple and plain, money in, money out. You can hide it all you want to, as all you want to, but I want to see a simple, simplified. And I also would like to see, everybody that asks for money, tell us what they're going to do. And I also like to see why each resolution is passed a comment for why the county manager approved. Nothing against her. I just want to know why she approved.
Okay. Anyone else? Mr. Rice?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I guess you're all exhausted on this, all these budget and meetings and all that. It wore me out. I got, didn't even get here today for the early meeting, you know? That's bad when I don't get there. But I do have concerns about this. Thank you, Mike, for putting up your money where your mouth is and telling us about it. I've watched this for thirty-some years consistently, and these budgets just keep rising. I don't care who the chairman is, who the board members are, the new county manager, attorney, it don't matter who's sitting up there, this budget just keeps going. There's not a ceiling here. We see our national debt the same way. Who is going to take responsibility and start cutting? I'm, I'm concerned about the taxpayers. I'm one of them, and I'm on the low end, too. And it takes a lot to survive in Buncombe County today. If I hadn't have bought my home when I did early in my life, I wouldn't have been able to stay in Buncombe County and barely do it now. We've got to think about the people that lives here, that are natives here, not people that's flying in here, that's got thousands and hundreds of thousands of dollars to stay here and spend. We need to think about our people. When I say our people, we're natives here, and the most that ends up there ain't even natives here. I think about my people. We need to have some common sense, and I don't know where that exists here yet or not. You end up here today and gone tomorrow, but I'm going to still be here. I live here. I'd like to see a tax reduction, seventeen million dollars? Good Lord, have mercy. Now, you say just keep the tax rate flat. You ain't keeping nothing flat. You're getting twelve million dollars at least out of new money when you keep it flat. That's shocking to most people's conscience, because when the general public hears you keeping it flat, it don't sound too bad to them, because they don't know how it works. And the tax money that's coming into this district, look how much come in on, on tourism development. That's a lot of money. But what about the tax money that we're going to get off of taxes? It's going to be really big. We don't have a savings, we ain't going to be able to do nothing. That's some general comment, but I think it's very pointed. Take control of it. Don't let the party do it.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Great. All right. We have a motion and a second. Are there any other comments from commissioners on the motion? All right. I'll make a, I'll make a, go ahead.
Well, no, you need to be, you need to be last. I'll let you. So, one, I want to. Turn this on. One, I want to, you know, I want to thank Commissioner Frye for his, for his presentation and, and the way he's specific on, on things that concern him and, and many of the, the things that concern Commissioner Frye. I even, I didn't support them at those dollar, at those dollar amounts when they first come out. But, you know, I'm supporting the budget for, for a few reasons. One is, you know, the, the rate is, is flat, and so it does sustain a tax cut from last year where the rate was reduced. It, it just some notes for me. It supports the, the county employees and their families. It helps. I think it supports education to highest investment that we've ever done, ninety million dollars, that the taxpayers have done in Buncombe County, promotes public safety and supports the first responders, and contributes to affordable housing and investments in early, early childhood. We may disagree on some of those numbers. I do. I disagreed on some of those numbers, but we're accountable to make sure we invest them properly. And, but that's some of the reasons why, why I'm supporting. I do think that, that all the commissioners up here, whether we agreed on everything or not, worked, worked pretty hard with the new county manager and others and staff and on, on the budget. Is it ideal? No. Can I support it? Yes. But that's my thoughts on the budget tonight, so. Again, I want to thank Mike for his, for his comments tonight. He always does a good job. I can always expect to see that every year, so we appreciate it.
I'll chime in. I'll also be supporting the budget and want to begin by thanking Ms. Pinder and all county staff. You've worked very hard on the preparation of this and also really look forward to what will happen when we have a twelve-month runway to work together for next year's budget, already thinking ahead. There is, there is one thing I just want to lift up and say some extra special thanks to community members who are part of the Early Childhood Education and Development Committee, which was launched this year as part of the process of creating the fund that we are effectively, officially putting into motion tonight. It will allocate three point six million dollars annually for early childhood education, expanding access to high-quality education in our community. And just want to really take a moment to give pause and thank, there's a group of about fifteen folks on that committee, Commissioners Whiteside, Commissioner Presley, myself, and then community members who have worked really hard over the last few months to take this from something that existed on paper, to wade through about eight million dollars in grant application requests and, and make difficult decisions, but ultimately unanimous recommendations to the full board of commissions about a slate of projects that do everything from getting new classrooms online as of August, meaning there are more three and four-year-olds in our community who'll be able to start high-quality preschool programs as soon as August, to supporting, expanding the, the pipeline for workforce development to train and retain teachers, to recognizing the many needs around mental health and trauma in particular that children in our community need support around, to really starting to do some of that work around the long-term planning and strategic work that's, that is important as this fund continues. So it was a very heavy lift and happened on a very quick, very quick turnaround. Some of those committee members are here with us tonight. So I just want to say thank you, and thank you to the county staff that helped make that possible. And I'm very proud that as we pass this year's budget, to see this fund becoming something real, and also to see the level of commitment around affordable housing in particular and other strategic priorities, us really putting some muscle and bone behind the, behind the goals that we passed in December two thousand and seventeen. So just want to share that as part of my reflections in preparation for the vote.
All right. Great. All right. Yeah, I'll just share a couple of thoughts, too, before we vote on this. Mostly been said before, but just to highlight a couple of the things I think are significant in the budget, I'm in agreement with my commissioner colleagues about the prioritization this budget reflects on affordable housing and early childhood education. These are issues that the commission has certainly worked on in years past, but, you know, I appreciate the fact that our commission went through a process to set strategic priorities, and we set these six priorities. And a lot of times when, you know, you go through these planning processes and you set these goals, a lot of times it seems like you look back later and say, did that really make any difference? But I really appreciate the fact that this commission has, has set some priorities and then really, along with our staff, worked really hard to identify opportunities to really advance them in a meaningful way. So I appreciate the fact that those issues are reflected as priorities in this budget. Appreciate the working groups, as Jasmine just mentioned, that have been focused on the early childhood education priority. I've really enjoyed working with Commissioner Edwards and Belcher on the Affordable Housing Subcommittee that we have, working on that issue, and all the project recommendations in the budget have all been developed by that, that committee, along with our staff and a lot of interested citizens who have taken an active role in participating in those meetings as well. I appreciate the fact that our budget commits to the county paying fifteen dollars an hour as a floor for all of our county employees. I think that's a, a great step for us to take, and, and we've been working towards that really for the last couple of years, so that this year when we did it, it actually didn't cost a lot of additional funds to get there. But I think it's, it's an important goal, and I'm glad the county is a part of that. We hope other employers in the county will, will consider this as well. And appreciate the work we've had with our law enforcement community. I want to acknowledge Sheriff Quentin Miller, who is here this evening. The sheriff presented some additional budget priorities for this year for things that we need to do to make sure we keep our community safe. And as with every different department and agency we work with, it's always, there's always some give and take, and we appreciate the, the good discussions with the sheriff's department around priorities there. And we're trying to tackle as many of them in this budget cycle as we can, and a lot of, a lot of good components of that are included in the budget this year. I want to appreciate and thank all the folks in all the fire districts. We've had good discussions around all the different work and new projects that the fire districts want to take on, and I think this budget reflects support for our fire districts in, in terms of trying to continue to improve public safety throughout the county. So I think those are all of my comments. Any other, any other comments before we?
I'd add one thing.
Yes, sir.
I think we left this out.
Go ahead.
You know, when I think of just me personally and our household, everything this year in budgeting has gone up, everything. You know, utilities, whatever you do. And I'd like to really thank the staff, the managers, and the commissioners, because we've done one thing. When you listen to all the changes we've made this year with early childhood, affordable housing, with what the sheriff is doing, what we're doing throughout the county, but the one thing we lose track of, our tax rate has remained the same. And I think that's, that's critical. You know, I think that's the important thing. And when you look at the quality of life we have in Buncombe County and we want to keep, that's the job of the commissioners. I think we've got to look out for our constituents and the residents of Buncombe County. We've got to make sure we have good schools, good law enforcement. But all of that, and I want to commend everybody, because we've done it, but we're keeping the tax rate the same. And, you know, I heard last year that our tax rate was going to go up still the same. But I think we can manage that, and we will. We'll continue to do that. But the main thing is, we've got to continue to give the services that we give to, and to make sure that we have a good, the quality of services. You know, I don't mind paying for anything, but my concern is when I don't get my money's worth. And I don't think any of the taxpayers can honestly say that they are not getting their money's worth. Some might disagree with me, but, you know, some people disagree with everything. But I don't think anybody can say that we are, and we're doing a good job of it. I'm through.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
I'll add just a few, turn it on, I'll add just a few thoughts. I am really grateful to Avril and the staff who made this process of me going through the budgeting for the first time really easy. They were always there to answer questions, and I really appreciate that, and being patient with me when some of the questions may have been really ridiculous. So thank you all for that. I also want to particularly commend Tim Love for working to streamline and make the fire tax request as smooth and seamless as possible, and I am really pleased to support each of those fire districts this evening who have made requests, and also supporting our sheriff's department. I am incredibly grateful for the work that all public servants do. You put your life on the line for us, and we should support you. Thank you so much for that. And also excited about the work that we are doing and continuing to grow in affordable housing, as we know that in Buncombe County, this is a growing issue, and I'm pleased that we're really digging in and taking a hard look at it and how we can support it. Of course, I would always like to see more money for schools and particularly our K-12, but I am really pleased this year to see the relationship building starting early so that throughout the year, we understand the needs of the school system and your long-term needs long before we get to the budgeting process. So I really do look forward to working closely with you all over the next year as we move forward and knowing your needs for the next fiscal year. So thank you all very much. This was a much easier process, and I really appreciate it.
Okay. I'm just glad we didn't have to do what Don said, raise this ten cent on our property tax. Three months ago, there was talk that we was going to raise it four or five cent, and that really kind of hit a nerve. And that really kind of hit a nerve with me because being a native here, we, we have got to watch out for our elders that's making, you know, payments every month on their property tax. But the one thing is this is my third budget. And Avril, you know, me and you've had talks that I was on the fence about the county manager that we hired. And I want you to know how proud I am of what you've done with our staff to bring them together and keep it neutral this year at 52.9 because not only you, our staff has worked really hard and the other commissioners and chairmen have all had input of what we are going to do and want to do. Would I love to seen the penny drop in it? Yes, we all would. But I'm telling you, after what we went through for three years, I, I mean, we owe our staff, Avril, a big thank you for what you've done. One year from now, let's see what we've got. Is, I'm, I'm the type is, last year somebody told me when we dropped a penny, we will go up next year. And look where we are today. If we will work together. Fire departments, I applaud every one of y'all of the way y'all have come to us and asked, but I applaud the way you have listened and want to work with us to make this happen. Sheriff's Department, you know, I talked with the former sheriff, we have let this, some of our cars go too long. If anyone knows cars, it's me. I just like to see a way where we don't have to spend all the money at one time and it happen again at the same time as these cars and what you need up there. We got to protect our people, fire, sheriff, and we're the ones that's going to have to step in and make it happen. So, Avril, you're getting closer and closer to being exactly what you said you was going to be, a great county manager. And thank you. And Jim Holland, you don't have to worry about no more budgets. And one thing, I'm not going to say anything about Friar because somehow he'll want to start an argument with me after we leave tonight, sir. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. All right. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, next item on the agenda is the FY19 Budget Amendment Summary. And Jennifer Barnett is back to talk about this item.
So, we do have three budget amendment items for fiscal year 2019. As we wrap up fiscal year 2019, the first item is related to the occupancy tax revenue fund. So, the current budget for the occupancy tax special revenue fund totals $23 million. Occupancy tax collections are up an estimated 9%. So, we are requesting to increase that budget by $4 million so that we are able to then make those payments of those revenue dollars back out to the TDA. And so, that is our request for the occupancy tax revenue fund.
Can I just make a comment on that, just so that, you know, people that are listening know that that tax is paid 100% by people outside of Buncombe County? Right?
People who stay in hotels. A Buncombe County resident could stay in a hotel.
No, they can't. Call, call them and try to book a room.
You can actually.
Okay, well, very close to 100%. I figured you guys might be on my side when I said that.
It's close to it.
99.7.
All right, 99.772. So, and obviously y'all have stayed in a hotel in Buncombe County, right? I have not. Okay, oh, that's it. That's when they let you in, okay.
Home renovation, sometimes it's.
All right, by generator.
Well worth it.
Okay.
Okay, why don't we go through each of them and then we'll, we'll vote on each of them. But let's just share, kind of talk us through each one and then we'll.
So, the, so the second item actually has two related budget amendments because one side of the budget amendment will be for the general fund. And then the other side is the Special Projects or Programs Fund for Economic Development. So, as we've discussed in some of our prior budget meetings, our request here at the end of fiscal year 2019 is that we are requesting approval to transfer $3 million of the currently budgeted Lennamare Economic Development Incentive Dollars to transfer those over to a Special Projects Fund. What that enables us to do is to set those monies aside related to our commitment or obligation to them if they complete the milestones that are outlined in their agreement. You've heard Tim Lee, Tim Love talk about the renegotiation of that. Our full commitment and obligation to them if they were to, to fulfill all of the milestones through 2024 is $6 million. So, our request this year is to be able to transfer that 3 million, set it aside. Any spending that would need to be done in the near-term future would be from those dollars. We would not come back to you to request additional budget for that until those funds have been expended.
Okay, so do we need two separate motions on that one? Or can we just accomplish that with a single motion? Okay, all right. But we do need a separate motion on the occupancy tax item, I would assume. Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are there any members of the public who wish to comment on either of these two budget amendments? All right. Is there a motion to approve the occupancy tax fund item? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Is there a motion to approve the economic development?
So moved.
Item?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Okay, last up on our new business is discussion of home and community care block grant and county aging services funding plan. And Stoney Blevins, our Health and Human Services Director, will present this item.
Good evening, commissioners and members of the public. Tonight, I come to present to you two requests. One is to appoint Land of Sky Regional Council as the administrator for our county's home and community care block grant funds. Just for information, these are federal funds that flow to us through the area aging agency to the county. And we can either administer those funds ourselves, or we can appoint an agency to administer them for us. We have traditionally used Land of Sky Regional Council to do this. They do a very wonderful job at it for us. And part of those funds really, part of that funding strategy is for a community group to meet together and receive applications for the funding about how they can best be used to, to aid seniors. And we have a group called the Buncombe County Aging Coordinating Consortium who meets and they have a, a funding committee that meets and reviews every application. So, think of like Juvenile Crime Prevention Council or even United Way Funding allocations. The process is very similar. And so, what I bring to you tonight is their funding allocation recommendation for state fiscal year 2020. These are about, if we can put it up on the, it's about $1.5 million in federal funds. That's down $10,000 from last year, so it's pretty flat. And then it's an additional $570,766 in county funds. We combine those funds together. We feel like that's best practice to let this group determine the best use of both the county and the federal funds. And so, I have a list of the agencies up there and the services they provide. The other thing I would say from an HHS perspective, and we do have a member of our staff that sits on the allocation committee. So, our purpose statement is to strengthen our communities by advancing health, safety, and opportunity. And if there's one community that I feel like we really do need to pay attention to in our community is the aging community. It's the fastest-growing demographic that we have. And I also love the end of that statement and our purpose statement is opportunity. And these funds really do give people the opportunity to age in place and to remain in their homes. So, I respectfully ask you to approve this funding strategy and to appoint Land of Sky Regional Council as our administrator for state fiscal year 2020.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Second.
There's a motion to identify Land of Sky as the administrator and to approve the recommended funding plan. Any members of the public who wish to comment on the motion? All in favor of the motion? Yes, sir.
I just want to, I just want to give a shout, shout out to Daystay at Hominy Baptist Church, which is in Kinnler. I've had an opportunity to be, to visit them many times. It's a great first-class ministry that, that allows those that need elderly care to be able to have it, have it there and, and give families, you know, a break. And it's just a great, I'm glad we're able to, to support it. I just wanted to give them a shout out tonight. And thank you, Stoney, for what you do and all of these recommendations. Thanks.
All right, thank you, Commissioner.
Sure.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Stoney. All right, we've got a couple of board appointments. See if I can find them. All right, yeah, first up is AB Tech. Matt Kern is for, eligible for reappointment.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, Buncombe County Child Protective Protection Team, Child Futility Team. There's one vacancy. Joanna Knowles has applied. I'll make a motion to appoint Joanna Knowles.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, and finally, the Homeless Initiative Advisory Committee. We talked about this a little bit last meeting. Meredith Switzer is recommended for appointment. Emily Ball had previously served, as we discussed, she actually doesn't reside in the county and Meredith is new on the organization and is recommended.
So moved.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We now come to public comment. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak to your public comment? Yes, sir. Please come in up. Just let us know your name and where you live. You've got three minutes to talk to us. There'll be a light that comes on. You've got 30 seconds left and then another light when your time is up. And when your time is up, please stop talking to us.
My name is Robert Randolph. I live in Swananoa at 105 Woodland Drive. I am also a native of Buncombe County. Was born in the old St. Joseph Hospital and was away for many years, but was privileged to come back and love being back in Buncombe County. I want to say how proud I am as a native of Buncombe County that there are so many initiatives to help homeless people and people needing affordable housing. As retired minister, I spend a lot of time involved in my church in Black Mountain, First Baptist Church of Black Mountain, which has a number of young families struggling to find a place to live. I serve also with the homeless shelter that is sponsored by the Swananoa Valley Christian Ministry, which is housed in First Baptist Church. I hear stories repeatedly. We wish we had somewhere where we could live, but we can't afford. We can't afford the rent. We can't afford to buy. We can't afford to live here. And they struggle going from homeless shelter to homeless shelter. And referrals are made to Home Rebound and they seem to be overwhelmed. And I just want to say I am glad as I looked at the budget tonight to see all these initiatives to help homeless people find a decent place to live. It makes me especially proud to be not only a native of Buncombe County, but a current resident of Buncombe County. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, anybody else? Mr. Rice.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. You know, the Lord said that we'd always have the poor with us. I don't know how we're going to fix the problem. And he said we was going to have forever. So, if you do fix that problem, don't you let me know. It's good to work on it, though. They, they've been a lot said about tax rate and they've been said about not raising taxes and all this. But I want to remind you, Wanda Green done a great job. You can look back at the history anywhere you want to. You can fault her for what she did and rightly so. But we got to put a but in it. She knowed how to do a budget. She knowed how to do things. And it might not been the way the new one is doing it. But why is the budget being processed the way it is right now? It's a being increased. It's a being new initiatives done. My goodness, what's changed about this except more money to spend? That's all I see changing. Now, think about this. And I'll point this to the one that said it, Mr. Al, talking about keeping the tax rate flat. My goodness, folks, whenever you do a reappraisal and you up it, you move it up twice, my God, what do you get? You get more money. You get a tax increase. Is that not right? Or am I wrong? It's a tax increase when you do a reappraisal. So, we've already had these tax increases. That's the reason you're sitting with a slush fund to spend money again. Another thing that concerns me is the new assistant county managers that I read about coming in. Why are they not under the same standard as a county manager that they need to be reviewed by the board and processed through the public just like she was? I think there needs to be some transparency and accountability on that part because I don't know who in the heck she's chose for this position. Neither one of them. One of them from Illinois, is that correct? One of them from the east. That's all I know. So, my concern is, is are we using transparency again? Or are we going to forget that word after this budget session? Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? Yep, go ahead.
I won't say it this time because you won't believe it anyway. You don't believe anything I say. I wasn't going to say anything, but Jerry mentioned a word that just puts a burr in my butt and I can't sit there. Transparency. And you know the problems that we had over asking for a copy of the budget. But I did finally get one. But the way I got it, I didn't like because somebody at home that didn't have a computer couldn't have got it because they couldn't have asked for a printed copy. And your attorneys quoted a statute to me, 1436.1, which says the county has the option of putting it on a computer and making it available for you to read. But the general statute says public records are anything that touches your hand and the public has access to, to it. And the motion that you all passed today had some legal ease. And you know how attorneys can tell you to go fly a kite without telling you. Had the word in there and generally we make things available. No, the general statute doesn't say generally. And it doesn't say generally we can sit up here and discuss things with the microphones off. It says the public is accessible to everything you do. And that does include what happens in the 2 o'clock meeting because you have a quorum there. So, I've been told, number one, I'm going to finally find out what libraries cost, which nobody knew. Very simple explanation and a question. It's been, y'all been working on it for six or eight months with all this great help. You should be able to throw that one out just like bing, bing, bing. You should be able to summarize every dollar that goes to the school just by looking at that budget you have online, especially those that work with the budget all the time. So, the questions I ask are not that hard. They're simple. They're kind and they're easy. And Avril, I hope you didn't take personally what I said about it. I would like to see on those resolutions where it says the county manager agrees with, just give me a sentence, why? We agree with this because it'll save money. We agree with this because it will do thus and though. Just don't say we agree with it. See, I've got a simple mind. Most people have. And when they ask questions and they don't get an answer, what do they assume? And when you spell the word assume, what does that make out of me and you both?
All right, thanks. Anyone else? All right, before we adjourn this evening, I would like to acknowledge that this is Mr. Jim Holland's last meeting with the Buncombe County Commission. Jim is retiring and so. Jim is retiring, and so I just wanted to say thank you to Jim for your great work for Buncombe County. We're going to miss you, but you've done a great job, and Buncombe County is a better place because of your work. So thank you very much. Couple of quick announcements. The county commission will not hold a meeting on July 2nd, which is the first Tuesday of the month, but we're not going to have a meeting that day. So our next meeting will be on July 16th. We're going to have a meeting at noon, the Commissioners' pre-meeting on the first floor at 200 College Street. And then we'll have the regular meeting on July 16th at 5:00 PM here in Room 326. Is there a need for a closed session this evening? Do you want to, or do you want to comment, Avril?
Just want to remind and let the public know, there is a special picnic to recognize and celebrate with a special Olympics athletes on Saturday, July 27th, at Buncombe County Sports Park, from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM. That is located at 48 AIPAC Drive in Canlar. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. All right.
Are you getting to go home this early?
All right. Meeting's adjourned.
You should have been celebrating, David, Governor of the House.